Justice for all.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate that. And again, we'd like to welcome everyone who is here with us tonight. Mr. Brown, and we have a student here with us tonight. If you got a report due in the class, we're always glad to have students here with us and learning about local government, so grateful to have you here with us. Let's go ahead with the roll call of the city council members, please. Mary.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Colin Erickson?
Here.
Councilmember Eric Erickson?
Here.
Councilmember Reese?
Here.
Council President Walker?
Here.
All right, we have a full council, so we will move on. Thank you all for being here. Item number four, or excuse me, item number three, is time for public comment. This is a time for if there's anything that is not on the agenda, if there's anything that you would like to make us aware of, we'd ask you to come to the podium and state your name and address and let us know of anything that might be of concern or just that you'd like to let us know about. Is there anyone that would like to take a moment and let us know anything? Is there anyone online?
No.
No, okay. All right, then, hearing none, we will move on to item number four, which is our committee reports from our council members. So let's go ahead and start down here to the right with Councilmember Colin Erickson.
So, the golf board did not meet this last month. The school district, they have a lot going on. They're very busy with everything going on, just a little bit what's coming up. They have Nutcracker from December 5th through the night. The choir and orchestra will be traveling to Temple Square in Salt Lake on the 13th and 14th. December 19th, the high school will have a Christmas, Christmas at Madison with George Dyer.
What is that?
That's on the 19th.
19th.
At 7:00 PM, and I believe the tickets are going to be coming on sale probably next week.
Okay.
I say in the basketball, men's basketball, or boys' basketball and girls' basketball is up and running and going good, so I tell you that high school and the school district's very busy and things are going on, and our youth is very active in that, and things are going good.
Great, thank you, yeah. And of course, we have, it's at the high school, but our city gershwin concert tonight is a fundraiser for the tabernacle, and if we get done early enough, we might be able to get out there and catch some of it, so. All right, next, Councilmember Johnson, thank you.
So, Councilmember Erickson and I both are on the combined trails, parks and recreation committee, so I don't want to give the whole report, but we have, we're going to meet quarterly, we have a schedule set up for the next year, so I'm excited about that. And then, this isn't on there, but since we have those Engage Rexburg meetings, I just wanted to, you know, and I'm the council member that goes to those, if any council members ever, they, you know, we always talk about if there's anything that the council would like pushed out to the public through our Engage Rexburg app, so if you ever have anything that you think should be pushed out to the public, I could bring it to that meeting, so.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, appreciate that. Yeah, and we might as well use that because we have it and we're paying for it, right? So we might as well use it. All right, Council President Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The youth advisory board went Tuesday night out to their Rexburg mobile food pantry, ended food for a couple hours, and it's a pretty good turnout, and they meet again in two weeks. Other than that, that's all I have. The ADA board, oversight board, does not met.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chambers.
Cultural arts, we have the community Christmas concert on December 2nd. We'll have the Heritage Youth Symphony, that's at 7:00. And then we have, on the 9th, the Upper Valley Women's Choir concert, and on the 15th is the Messiah sing-along. That one is at 7:00, and the Upper Valley Women's Choir is at 7:30. The urban renewal board met today, and we had one outlined piece of property to take care of in terms of acquisition, and we got that taken care of, so that downtown project is now full steam ahead. We were kind of excited about that. So that was a huge relief to get that piece, last piece of property secured. I think that's it, Mayor, unless I missed something on that urban renewal board.
I think you're good. Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Eric Erickson.
Just in addition to what my aunt has told us about the parks and rec, John Lewis has kind of done an inventory of all the assets of the, in each of the parks, and one of the tasks that each member of that committee will have is to kind of be, kind of give a little oversight into each one of those parks, and kind of inform the city about core needs that, you know, if there's any thing that breaks or is, you know, is in need of repair, things like that. So I think that's, I think John's got things going in a good direction there, and I think that'll be a good, good thing for the, that committee to get involved and kind of help us with that.
Keep up with those things. Great, all right, thank you.
That's all I have.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Reese.
Yeah, last week, the police and the school district, well, through the city, had an outreach event at the high school where the police gave parents specific information about issues like substance abuse and sexual abuse and a variety of other topics. So it was, I attended, it was really well done. I'd seen a lot of that information before as a public school teacher, you know, the police often come and present at our professional development, but it was good to see that pushed out to the parents. I wish more parents had have been able to make it, but it was, it was a really good, informative evening, and the parents that were there seemed to be very appreciative of that information from the police, so hopefully we'll be able to continue that in the future. That's everything we've got.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate that. All right, let's move on to item number five, which is a public hearing, and as in all public hearings, we will take testimony from anyone who is in favor of this action, and the action is the intent, our intent to sell real property located at 1256 North, Second East pursuant to Idaho Code 50-1402. So with the, with the public hearing, I don't know, is that something that we need to talk about in any kind of detail, Matt, do you believe, before we, before we go into public hearing?
Deb's going to zoom into it.
Oh, she's going to bring that up, okay, just so that we all know for sure what we're talking about here.
Yeah, and we might, I might just mention, so this piece of property, we actually did buy it with street funds. We needed to buy it for that Second East to widen Second East to put the path in there. We did have to acquire some property, you know, as we owned it from the development workshop, which took a couple years to have them disencumber it so we could purchase it. And all in, it's like .95 acres, and then we also salvaged the shop off of it that will eventually go up and for the streets to use. And so, so we just, we don't see a further need to maintain or hold on to this piece.
Okay, and, all right, so, yeah, commonly known as the
Squires.
Squires property, that's right. I went to say it, and then it left my mind.
Mayor, I just had a quick question before we go into public hearing.
All right.
Matt, do we need to declare that surplus?
Didn't we do that?
I think we already did that.
It's been a while ago. We just need to have the public hearing to dispose of it.
So we, we put it out, it's probably been a couple years now, we put it out with a bid minimum the first time we did it, and I think it was $350,000, and we didn't get any bids on it. That was a couple of years ago.
Quite a while.
And we put it out without a bid minimum, and we'll show you what those results are after the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so if there are no other questions, we will go ahead and declare this public hearing open, and we will ask for testimony in favor of this action, then in the neutral position, and then any testimony against this action. So at this point in time, I would ask if there's anyone here who is, who would like to testify in favor of this, of this action, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Is there anyone that would like to? Seeing none, is there anyone who'd like to testify in the neutral position about this action? Okay, is there anyone who would like to testify against this action? All right, seeing none, I will declare this public hearing closed, and I would entertain a motion to move forward on selling this real property item. Is there such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, do we need to see what the bids are first?
Well, I think, I think that's the next item.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that is the next item, yeah. So we just need to declare our intent to sell it first, and then we will go ahead with the approval.
Mr. Mayor, I assume that we, we do that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Chambers. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, go ahead with that item. And number six is the approval of bid STR 07-24 for this same real property located at 1256 North, Second East. It's a .95 acre parcel of land with a sunset clause of 36 months to begin construction, the right of the city of Rexburg to buy back at the original sales price, and if purchaser sells property, the condition of the sunset clause be part of the sales agreement. Okay, Matt, go ahead on that.
Okay, I'll just mention what they are. So, so the, you know, we, when we put this out, just so everybody knows, we had a lot of interest on this property over several years. I think Scott said we sent it out to over 30 people on a list, and we did have a lot of inquiries on this property. We ended up only getting two bids. We got one from Mark Ellison, and one from TOK, I think it's TOK, and they are, TOK is representing someone in this one, and really, they had to meet a few things. One, and then another couple of things to keep in mind, we are keeping 30 feet of easement on the east side of this property, so we can put utilities in there if we need to or for, to get vehicles through there. And with this, whatever we accept, there's a 36-month sunset clause, meaning that they have to be under construction within those 36 months, or we can exercise our right to purchase it back at whatever price they bought it for. And so, so that's a couple of things to keep in mind. So anyways, these are the two bids, both of them would really be commercial use, which meets the zoning, and so you can see the 750 from Ellison, and then the other one was 822, 822,400. And then just for your information, our all-in investment on this is about $327,000. So, so it would be really pretty beneficial to, meaning that's what we paid for those properties, for that property all in.
Several years ago, yeah.
Yeah. So.
So, the lot, though, does not include, I noticed there was two parcels right there, one right next to stationary road. It doesn't include both?
No, it does. It includes that one as well.
Oh, it does, okay.
Yeah, and that's the one that we had to acquire, that it took us, I think, two, two-plus years to work through that disencumbrance process.
Okay, so both of those are being sold for those bids?
Yeah.
Then we'll maintain any of the right of way that we need.
Okay. If there is no other discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve bid STR 07-24. Is there such a motion?
I assume that we approved the bid for STR.
Actually, I guess you need to, I guess we need to approve the amount of
Right, the amount for TOK for 822,400, right? Eight-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, four-hundred-thousand.
Okay.
Eight-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, four-hundred dollars.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go ahead and move forward with that action. All right, thank you, Matt. All right, item number seven is our staff reports. We'll start with our information technology division with Mr. Todd Smith.
So we are renewing our Microsoft license agreement. Actually, we're not renewing it, we're going to change companies, move to a different company, but these licenses include just about everything that we use for Microsoft, so Microsoft Word, Excel, PowerPoint stuff, the operating system on the desktop computers, all of the server stuff, databases, Exchange for our email, all those types of things. In addition to all of the licenses like your email and storage, and I mean, everything dealing with Microsoft, so. We have these three bids that we received, Soft Choice, and NCPA is Idaho State Contract, and then another company called Wright Systems. Wright Systems is local, out of Boise, I guess, local to Idaho, and so we're just seeking approval to move forward with the Wright Systems bid to renew our Microsoft license.
Quick question, Todd, how does this relate to the Microsoft contract that I just signed the other day?
So that, that technically was not a contract, it just, that was a zero, zero increase, whatever, for, we, every, every three year, or every year, we have to do a true-up with Microsoft, how many licenses we've added or not added or whatever, and so that was part of that.
Oh, well, I was just saying that we don't have any difference, different, okay, that's right, yeah. Okay, any questions for Todd about this, about what it's all about, or I've got that straight? Okay, apparently we all trust you, Todd.
Thank you.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve this, this contract, I guess, would be.
Yep, contract.
Yeah, licensing contract. Is there such a motion?
Can I ask a question first?
Yes, you may.
How does this compare to the last time? Is this, is this an increasing cost every?
So, last year, we paid about $130,000 through Dell, so this is about a four-and-a-half percent increase over last year. About two years ago, three years ago, it must have been three years ago, we renewed that contract with Dell, there was like a 12% increase three years ago, so.
This is a smaller increase than what it's been in the past, well, that's good.
And this is a yearly recurring cost then, every year?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
And this isn't anything really new, I mean, we've been paying this for years.
Yeah, and this is all budgeted, and, okay.
The cost of keeping all of our electronics running, unfortunately, right?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would make that motion that we approve the Microsoft license contract with Wright Systems.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, we will go ahead with that. Thank you, Mr. Todd.
I just had one question for Todd.
Okay.
Could you just give us an update on the security systems and what, how's that going?
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Yeah, so M2 Automation out of Boise, they've been onsite for, I don't know, it's been six weeks now, five weeks, and they have pretty much all of City Hall done, so all of the cameras, the new ones to be deployed and the ones to be upgraded are all done. They've got all of the doors in City Hall done, and they're finishing up in the police department this week, so that should be finished up too. And then they'll be moving out to the golf course after they mount a camera for Keith on the Parks Building this week, but they'll be moving out to the golf courses and get those set up, so it's going pretty well. Sometime tomorrow, probably, we'll cut over from our old alarm system to the new alarm monitoring system, so if somebody, you know, comes in after hours or whatever, we'll get those calls through a different monitoring service rather than Alliant that we've been using, so, yeah.
That's good, I'm glad to hear that. When are we looking at the skate park area to get that up? I mean, we got nailed down there so bad this summer, it's, it looks pretty bad to pass there, I just like to.
We don't have like a set schedule, we have a few higher priority areas like City Hall, the police department, the golf courses, right? And then we're just going to move out from there, so if you'd like to, you know, run that closer to the top of the list, we can certainly do that.
No, I think you're doing just fine, I just want, just eventually get there, and then we'll work with the police department, maybe try to get that enforcement down there and clean that up.
So they started near the end of October, like the last week in October, I think it was, September, rather, first week of October, and there was supposed to be 175 days, as was their contract timeline, so.
That'll probably be springtime, because they're not going to be out there skating on it in the winter, so.
Right, it should be there before the skaters are, right?
Okay, thank you.
One, one other quick question, sorry, and I don't know if this is you or Keith, but.
Let's just say Keith.
Do you have, do you have any timeline on getting fiber to the traffic signals?
Yes.
In town?
Yeah, so we've been actively working with Silverstar, the Lightbridge folks, to do that. The ones that were on the original ring were the highest priority, and they've managed to get six, they managed to get fiber to six of those so far this year, so that's probably all we're going to get done. The fiber is not actually terminated there, it's just in the cabinets, ready to receive the electronics, and so they'll finish those up next year. The remainder requires some kind of trenching between a handhole and the signal boxes, and so it's just not possible to do it now.
So is there kind of a timeframe on when we're going to be, when we'll be able to see some improvement in the signaling in town?
That's kind of up to Keith and the server, so we've got.
They all need to be hooked up. If we're going to, if we're going to be able to time them, they'll, everyone will have to be hooked up into that fiber for us in time, because the, the individual clocks tend to slip, and so they get off, but if we can get them all hooked into fiber, then we can keep them consistent.
And do we have the systems in place to do that? To make that happen once the fiber's in the, the signals?
We haven't purchased all the equipment yet, but yeah, we're planning on it.
We are having those conversations actively, like today even, we had a conversation about it, so, yeah.
Okay, the inquiry actually came from Senator Ricks. He said that there's something, I didn't quite catch it, but he says that there's some money set aside by the state to, but I kind of got the impression that there was a time limit on that, so I don't know if you might want to check with him, he, he had the, anyway, he had, he'd ask about it specifically because there's some money that's available, I guess, from the state.
Do you know if that's part of the fiber project?
Well, I wonder, I mean, we already know that we need to bill them once it gets hooked up for, wasn't it like 340?
430, I think, is what we're looking at.
340 or 430, I can't remember the exact number, but, but they are planning to contribute 300,000 or 400,000 to this project.
Okay, I just got the impression from him that there was some sort of a deadline.
Deadline?
That's why I'm, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, yeah, let's maybe reach out, and then, I can always invoice it by the end of December, because I wonder, I wonder if it's tied to ARPA, if it has something to do with that.
That's what we were thinking.
Could be something like that, but you might.
And I, and who knows if that's the money that we're already planning on, or if, because there was some discussion in that meeting I was at the other day that there is some more money available from the ARPA fund, so, you know, and we talked about that in staff meetings, so we'll probably want to follow up on that a little bit more, so. Okay, all right, thank you, Todd, appreciate that. All right, next would be our finance report with our CFO, Mr. Matt Nielsen.
Josh, if you want to come up, if there's questions on this budget adjustment, but as he's coming up, one quick update we want to give you, we do have kind of a pre-contractor meeting tomorrow for the RFQ on the police building. One thing that we did do today is we issued an addenda. Unfortunately, as we dug into the state code, we determined that we have to do a separate RFQ for the architect.
Oh, really?
And so we kind of had to pull that out, and then we'll work on getting an RFQ for the architect and get that out. It doesn't stop our timeline on the one with the GMGC, or CMGC, but just so you're aware, we'll be working on that as well. Okay, so this one, so Josh came over and we chatted about this the last few days, so this is a budget adjustment for police. Really, all of the funding is coming from federal grants, and so there's a couple grants. One, they've received in conjunction with the school district, and it's for the school resource officer, one of the school resource officer positions, and that one, we're looking to get approximately about $102,000 a year, and that's a three-year grant, so it's 102 each of those three years. And then the other one, the police applied for some, to replace body cams, and so the cameras that they wear on, on their vests, and we had had in our capital improvement plan over the next five years to kind of replace those a little bit at a time. I know that they're having some troubles because they can't get parts oftentimes to fix those, and so we got this $70,000 grant, so what we're proposing is that we just replace them all for all of the patrol, and so that would be about $140,000. And then the server that houses all of that footage, that camera footage, would be about $15,000. And then last week, last week, right, you lost your fingerprint machine, and so that, it's no longer functioning, and so to replace that's about $20,000. So you're looking at about $175,000. We are asking for $3,000 to come out of contingency in the general fund. And then, just for your information, in addition to the body cams, they would like to start purchasing the dash cams that are part of that system, and that could happen over time, and then they would apply for that grant next year as well, so. Do they want to add anything?
That's basically, we've, we've tried getting as much life out of the cameras as we can. WatchGuard is the company that we've used for 12 to 15 years. They were bought out by another company, they don't make the system that we've been using, and so that's where the transition, transition has started to occur, and it's just, where we got the grant to match, it just turns out, it would be easier to get everyone on the same system instead of switching back and forth, and the technology's pretty fascinating, what they can do with the new camera systems, and so that, that's our, the reason we're, we're trying to move forward. The fingerprint machine, I think we've had it almost 20 years, and so we've, we've gotten a lot of life out of it, and it just decided last week to not work for us anymore, so. So that's where we're wanting to use the funds that we got covering the grant to help compensate for, for these other needs that we, we could really use right now, so.
Okay, sounds great. All right, and any, any questions, or is anybody ready to make a motion to go ahead with this budget adjustment?
I'm sure they don't want to go back to ink boards that we used to have, like 25, 30 years ago, to have that over there. No, I'd make the recommendation and.
I've just got a question.
Okay, go ahead.
The grant is a federal grant for $70,000, and the match is an additional 70, so that means that comes from us, the match?
So, so we, there's one grant that is the 102,000 per year for the next three years, that's, covers the wages for one of the community policing officers.
Right.
So that, that is separate. The 70,000 is a match grant, so the federal grant provides the 70,000, and then the city matches that with 70, creating that 140,000 that will replace all of our camera system, and so a lot of that funding, the request is to kind of take that 100,000 that we're saving on wage from the, the community policing grant to help cover that 70,000 to match the, the body camera match grants.
And they're okay with, the grant people are okay with that?
Yeah, we've, we've gone through the details with them to make.
Yeah, okay.
So, so does that mean we won't get the new resource officer?
So he's already in place. They, this grant just covers his wage and, wage and benefit, so there, it's not a new hire grant, it's just a grant that covers his wage for the next three years.
My understanding is you had already budgeted for that salary, and now this grant is covering that salary, so you can then shift that salary that salary, so you can then shift that salary over to cover the other 70,000 and get the fingerprint machine. So essentially, you're still exactly within budget except for $3,000 that needs to come out of contingency. You're just moving from one to another because of these grants that have come in.
Yeah, and we, we already added that resource officer in last year's budget that came on, and they knew that, but they approved the grant to help fund it.
Oh, so we, we weren't count, we weren't counting on the grant to fund it?
Oh, okay. And the school district, we specifically, because we did this with the school district, we specifically said, does that mean you're going to reduce your contribution towards it? And they said no. And so we're getting their contribution plus the grant.
Okay. Okay, a little confusing.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to go ahead with this budget adjustment.
I'll make that motion to approve this budget adjustment.
Okay, is there a second?
Aye, second.
Second by Councilmember, sir. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go ahead and get a new fingerprint machine. Thank you, Chief, we appreciate you being here.
Can I ask one question?
Yes. Go ahead.
I was just, when I go to campus every day on Second South, just to the north of the outdoor track, I, like today, I counted like five students just in the time I walked past that were jaywalking across there. And it's not, you know, it's actually pretty dangerous, I feel like I've almost hit some of them, because it feels out of control to me, like I don't know if I've ever seen as many people jaywalking right there.
Yeah, I like that area.
Uh huh, and, and a little bit closer to the track, right? That turn in that goes to like the Romney Building, they just all jaywalk right there. But, but it's so dangerous, you know, because you've got all those cars parked right there and you really can't see them until they're already out into the streets, so I didn't know if like the police ever find them for doing that.
We can, we can do a special watch or an enforcement in that area. That was one location a month ago, we had someone hit in the crosswalk. But we'll, we can do a, a special watch and do an extra enforcement.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I just worry, you know, it's, I feel like it's a little crazy. And then you get the people on the little motorized unicycle thing too, like leaving in and out, so it's a little crazy.
We're in patrol.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief, appreciate you. All right, next item on the agenda is item number two, A, financial reports and presentation of where do my taxes go?
Yeah, so.
This is a great thing for y'all to be able to learn.
So on the finance reports, I'm not going to open those up tonight, but, you know, on our cash and investments, it's, as I kind of always tell you, in the fall through the early winter, we're using more cash than we're bringing in, and so that's reflective of that. And, but I don't see anything out of the ordinary there, so. So on this, where do my taxes go? I'm not going to hit every single one of these. We, we basically, we try to release this every year, we put it on our website. I think the big thing for you is, as people ask questions, refer them there, you know, they can take a picture of that, you can send it to somebody, it pulls it right up on our website. But just to, to kind of break it down, so this is your typical, if I can get it there, just can't quite roll it, there we go. So if this is your typical tax code, if you live in the city, which is the thousand, the tax code 1,000, but if you, the way we have always compared it is, we say, well, what's your, how much tax is it per $100,000 of taxable value? And then keep in mind, like if you're trying to look at a residence, they're going to have, they're going to have a homeowner's exemption that reduces, you know, that, what that total taxable value is. But, and so we kind of just, we just try to educate people on when they pay their, their property tax in the city, if they live in the city, how much comes back to the city. It's about $319 or, or almost 30%. Interestingly, as I looked at what the average is across the whole state, because we have access to a document, they go out and do a big study on that every year, it's right at 29%. And so we're, we're kind of right at the norm. For counties across the state, they average is about 38%, and we're at 46%. And so we're a little high on the county side.
Why is that?
For various reasons, I, I don't know that I can say specifically.
Because we're, according to this, we're out of whack with all the other cities. The county takes a, a much larger portion of the tax dollar in Madison County than they do in the other counties.
They do take a bigger one, yeah. Yeah, and.
Except for all those.
You know, some, I don't know that.
Commissioner salaries?
No, no, it's not that. You know, there's, there's, there's probably various reasons. Some of it could be indigent funds, some of it could be, do you have a jail, do you not have a jail? I mean, they're not all offering the same services, right? And so, but, but I just, I think for us, I like to point it out because I, I think as a city, when you compare where we're at, I think we're pretty conservative when you look at how we're using our tax dollars. And so, then you can see the rest, the school district's right around 19%, and then the others are really pretty small. So how are we using that property tax? You know, we're, we're really putting it towards police and fire, the bulk of it, and then parks and rec. And so of the 6.3 million we got in 2023, that's, that's how we broke that out. Now on the county level, so this would be like, I live outside of Rexburg city limits, so maybe you live in Hibbert or, or Burton, you're paying about $825 per 100,000 of taxable value. And so you can see how much you pay, but like the county's portion out there is 60%. Of course, the city's not on that. The fire district is added, so that's an additional one. And then how is the county spending their almost 17 million in property tax that they got in 2023? You can see their biggest thing is, is definitely the justice system, the courts and the sheriff. And then general operations is their next largest.
Matt, what's that revaluation reference to?
Reevaluation? I can't remember. I, I think it, I think it has something to do with the Board of Equalization and all that, when, you know, how people can go and protest, and then they can go to the state level as well.
So this is money they could be refunding back?
Revaluation.
Yeah, I believe that's what it is, but.
Yeah.
I don't know all the specifics of that one. I pulled this off, I didn't get this from them, I pulled it out of their audit, is where I get these numbers, just pull it out from their financials. Okay, so then, this is just same kind of look, instead, it's a dollar instead of a pie. This one is interesting, I can try to make this a little bigger. So this, this one is per person. And I went ahead and I've included in this a lot of like cities, because we get compared a lot to the provos and the orums and, you know, those, those type of things, college towns, if you will. And so as you look at that, on the very bottom, you can see the average of what people are pulling in. The red is property tax, the blue is sales tax. As you look at Utah cities, you'll notice that Utah cities are very heavy on sales tax, lighter on property tax. But Idaho is heavier on property tax. And then you get into, I can't remember if I left Bozeman on there, you know, then you get into some places where they.
Yeah, Bozeman's the fourth one down.
Okay, and see that one, you can see, they just do property tax, they don't do a sales tax. So, so there's different ways that, you know, states and municipalities get their money. I like the way that our legislature does it because I think it provides a pretty good balance, because I think if you're super heavy on the sales tax and you don't have local sales tax authority, which we don't, then it can be problematic if your economy starts to dip quite a bit. So as you look at Rexburg, of course, we have probably larger families than a lot of other cities. You can see that per capita, you know, we're collecting about 167 in property tax, and the average is 398, almost 400. And then in sales tax, we're collecting about $95, the average is about 177. But as you look at even some of our neighbors, you know, Idaho Falls, they're almost getting 700 bucks per capita on the property tax and 100 on sales tax. And so, so I think it just goes to show that, you know, we, we really utilize our dollars in a, in an efficient way. I think hopefully the taxpayers think that we're, we're spending it wisely, so. And then, let me show you.
Matt?
Yeah.
Those numbers, they're certainly skewed, I'm, I'm sure, because of all the multifamily housing that we have in the city. I mean, they pay property tax, but not nearly as much per person as maybe another city would be, right? Is that?
I, I mean, it's going to vary a lot, right? I mean, because provo's going to have a ton of, same thing we do, right? I think, I guess the point that I'm trying to make with it is that these are the dollars we get, those are our two main revenue sources, right? And if you look at it on a per capita basis, how much are we getting and what are we doing with those dollars? So.
Any other questions?
And is that updated with the most current per capita? And it's still?
I use, what I do is I use, yes, I use the 2023 census estimate, which took us down, by the way, a little bit.
Yeah, I was just curious how it compared to last time.
From the 2020 census, so. Kind of got shafted on that one a little, but I do stick with the census numbers. Okay, so I'm going to jump into the other one because they're, just real quick. So the budget in brief, there is, there's a couple charts I just want to show you. So we do this budget in brief every year. Honestly, typically, we do it like many months before we did it this year, we just haven't had time to get in, get it done. We'll send this out in the newsletter, we'll put it on our website. I think it gets utilized quite often, because we actually have people call us all the time, and we just say, go to our website, you can pull the budget in brief for the last 10 years. And so, a couple things that, just to point out, I'm not going to go through everything, obviously, but, you know, we, we did add three full-time positions in this budget. The, as I go down through, if you ever want to kind of see where are we spending our money, public works accounts for about 47% of this budget. And then police, fire, ambulance accounts for about 19% of it. And then another big, big one is transfers. You know, we, we do transfer in and out of various funds quite often, which is really, you know, that, that kind of inflates your budget, so to speak, right? And so you've got an extra 15 million in there. So instead of 92 million, if you take the transfers out, then you're going to drop by that amount.
If we're comparing our budget to, say, Idaho Falls or other budgets, they'd probably have the same thing, right? Different transfers.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So it's all relative, yeah.
Yeah, and that, that number's going to move quite a bit depending on how many projects you have. This year is a very high project year for us.
Yeah.
And so as you go through this document, you'll see that some of our biggest projects are wastewater. I mean, wastewater is huge this year, so.
So, so Matt, just in case anybody asks, how do we, we can't sustain a 15% budget increase every year. I can't imagine, but we, but we're doing it this year. So, or almost 15%, whatever it was. Well, how, how do I, how do you explain that?
Well, it's, it's really, I think it kind of goes back to those projects, because you have to keep in mind that on a lot of these projects, we are saving for many, many years, right? And so we, we're keeping that money in a reserve or an investment fund, and then when that project happens, we transfer it to the construction fund to pay that. And so, so I mean, that's how I would explain it. The, the other way is, if you really want to see how much we're going up on an operational basis, I put that number in here. So if you were to go look at year to year, like last year where we were at versus this year, our operation budget is about 46 million. And that's not going to be, you know, as significant of an increase, so.
Yeah, the total budget is really, it, it's kind of not really the, the budget that we, because there's so many transfers and money moving back and forth, and you have to add those to it, which kind of inflates it really more than it really is, so. It's confusing.
But that's what people see, that's the first thing they're going to see. We're up 15% over last year, that's what they're going to see.
And that's what you have to explain to people, is that it's, it's all, it's all that voodoo math that.
Well, it's governmental.
I'll just send them to you.
It's governmental accounting. And, you know, we, we had a CPA that was a city council member at one point, and he's like, what is this accounting? I'm like, it's governmental accounting and that's how you do it, so.
Yeah, it's, it is kind of confusing.
Yeah. Just a couple quick things just to point out. I'm not going to, like I said, go through all of it, but I think on a good note, debt service, 2025 is the last year for the sewer bond, which is awesome. So we'll pay that $790,000 this year. And then as we go forward in our rate setting, unless we go borrow more money, then that's going to disappear out of that, so that's, that's awesome news.
So it's good.
Yeah, and then the, so really, the only debt that we have after this year is the water DEQ loan, and we owe about 7 million bucks on that. And it's 1.75% interest for 30 years, so, pretty, pretty amazing, so. And then the last one I want to show you, actually, no, I don't, I think we kind of looked at these. So I, I think that's it. I think you guys are aware, we've covered the utilities, that's going to go up about 2.8% per month for the typical resident, so.
Matt, where do you account for the grant dollars that come into the city?
Well, so they have their own up here. See if I can, I gotta actually look at.
Aren't those, aren't the grant dollars part of transfers to it, money transferred in?
No, no, we'll show, we'll show them in a year as a revenue when they're earned. And that, that's a great point, this year, that's a huge number. So you can see federal grants.
We got a lot of grants.
10.7 million. I mean, that, that's probably the biggest number I've ever seen in a given year.
Thanks, way to go, Mary.
Give those to Mary.
Good job.
Yeah, and, and probably the most impressive thing there is that a lot of that's actually in sewer, and it's pretty rare that we get many federal dollars for sewer, so.
I should say, way to go, Mary, and all of those who work with her to get those, because she does have some, we have a pretty good team that works on those grants, Justin and Keith and, and a bunch of different people that, that help out on those too, so.
Well, I imagine that has something to do with the 15%.
Yeah.
Increase.
Yeah. Because those, those, those are going to be, you're going to see that expense increase as well, right, for that project on the other side of the ledger, if you will, so. Okay, any questions on that?
Any more? Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
That's all I've got.
All right, let's move on with item number C, which is our public works report with Mr. Keith Davidson. Item number one is approval of the U.S. DOT Neighborhood Access and Equity Grant Agreement for Planning and Designing Connections Across U.S. Highway 20.
Yeah, so this is the, the reconnecting communities grant that we received. We just need to take it through and get approval from council so the mayor can sign off on it. It's a $2 million grant, we have a $500,000 match with that.
Anybody opposed to taking $2 million? Or is there, or is there a motion to go ahead and approve that?
I'm all over this.
I'll make the motion to approve the, accepting that grant. This is huge for our community on the division here we have and connecting our east and west back, so this is huge, so thank you.
Especially after the summer.
Thanks, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll start with it.
Second by Council President Walker. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, thank you.
Item number two.
Can I just ask one question? So do we have any kind of, there's like no timeline at all, right? Like if you had to guess, would, do you even have a guess if everything went according to plan?
I don't, because it's, we've got to go out, so it's, it's going to, the money's going to come through ITD, and we're going to be working closely with ITD on it, because we felt like that was probably our best avenue to have that, obviously, because we're going to be crossing U.S. 20. So we still need to go out and get a consultant on board, and so the timelines, my guess will be a couple of years.
And reading it, it said 2026, 2027, possibly, of getting this report back and.
Yeah, yeah, because we're looking to take it up, right? The grant takes us through design, we'll see how far we can go with that, and we might end up having to, to pick one crossing and say, okay, that's the one, that's the main one we need to have designed.
Instead of having options, you mean?
Yeah, well, because we, we know that basically the three locations, right, that we're looking at for crossings, right? You've got Moody, you've got Seventh South, and then you've got Pole Line. And so looking at that, we just make a determination of which one is our number one priority, which is number two priority, which is number three. And then depending on how far the money goes and what the cost is for the design of it, then we just select one and.
And hopefully, we could do it, I would love to see two of them designed, but we'll see where the, how far the money goes with that, so.
And will we hear what the priority is, if it comes down to having to prioritize them, or do?
Yeah, we'll have that discussion with council.
Good.
So, yes.
Does this take into account the potentiality of elevating highway?
Yeah.
Money?
Yeah, no, that's definitely, definitely on the, on the table. When we discuss, when we get a consultant on board, we'll be discussing, looking what those costs are, the difference, whether we look at U.S. 20 up and over, or we take each of those roads up and over. I mean, U.S. 20 is an oversized route, and so if we were to take our individual roads up and over, they gotta be higher. And that means we gotta go further out, and so we'll see which, what option is the best for us, what, where the costs lie.
We can talk ITD and they're going up and over, instead of us going up and over, that would be better. But we'll see if they think it's better, so. Okay, any other questions for Keith? Okay, thank you, Keith, appreciate that.
Okay.
All right, item number two.
We've got one more.
Yeah, that's item number two.
The utility rate, right?
Yeah, so this is, we've discussed before, we've been working with the consultant FCS. And they, we've got a contract with them, so we're seeking council approval on this contract. And that's to do our utility rate study, to take a look at the rates and what we're charging on those, to make sure we're in line. And so the contract is for $144,775. So we're seeking approval from council for that.
How often do we do this?
We've never done one, well, that I know of, at least as long as I've been working here. So this is our, our first one, and we, we felt like, you know, we should, it would be good to have a consultant come and look at how we've been doing it, make sure we're on track with what, what we have been doing.
So before now, you've kinda just been comparing with other cities and what they're doing, or?
No, we have a, Matt has an elaborate spreadsheet that we go through. And, and we take a look at that, we look at, you know, what, what our costs are, and then what, what we should be charging with those rates. And so, I mean, it's a pretty thorough evaluation that we go through every year on it. But we just felt like, you know, it would be good to have an outside consultant take a look at it.
Well, and we, we met with them, and we added a couple things to this, so it added a little cost. But like, one of the things we looked at is how are we going to handle water rights going forward? Cuz that's, that's a whole different ballgame. It used to be that you could come in and develop, and, and you didn't have to buy the water right. Now you gotta provide it if you're gonna develop, and we may get to a situation where we need to buy water rights and then sell that to them. So we wanted to look at that process, and then we're also looking to see if there's a way, when we charge a capacity fee for water and sewer, to somebody, you know, we're, we're estimating that when they pay that. And so we're trying to find out if there's a way to, to look back on that, or to charge them if they go over that. Cuz that would be, the risk, right, is if we undersell that, then, you know, we're not gonna have that money available to replace it. It's already hard enough to replace it, because you're replacing it down the road, and everything's more expensive down the road, cuz of inflation. And so, so we added a couple of those items.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve this utility rate study agreement with FCS.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the utility rate study agreement with FCS for the amount of $144,775.
All right, thank you, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go ahead with that study.
Okay, I've got one item clarification.
Okay.
So the signs in Porter Park, we've been looking at those, been getting anchors in, but we need to order the signs. And, and as we were discussing, cuz normally on there, we have 2:00 AM to 7:00 AM, no parking. But we were looking at that, and we felt like, you know, in the summer months, we probably have people coming in earlier to walk around the park. And so I wanted to get council's thought on maybe what your thoughts are, and what, what timing we should put on that, on those signs around Porter Park. One thought I had, just a suggestion, would be maybe we go midnight to 6:00 AM and look at that. Sometimes we're gonna get people that might come earlier than that, but I, I think that would probably catch the bulk of people. That way, we don't have people who are coming in that are like, wanna follow the rules, and they see us at 7 o'clock, and they're like, well, we, we can't park there, cuz it says 7 o'clock, right? And so that's, that was kinda my, my thoughts along that. So I don't know if council has other ideas or different suggestions, but we're looking at that four-hour parking, and then no parking overnight, and it's just that, that time, timeline.
You're thinking instead of 2:00 AM, put it at, at midnight?
Yeah, cuz generally, the park's closed.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, it closes before that.
Close at 11, right?
But I just thought, you know, maybe that's a, a good time. I mean, we could, we could look at whatever, but if you guys have thoughts or suggestions on that.
Midnight to 7:00.
But I'd like to get the signs.
Sounds better than if it's 7:00, sounds good to me. It works better for the public.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good, sounds like we have consensus on that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, item number eight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have one question for Keith, just a follow-up on Coyote Willow and crossing there. I know it's winter time, frozen ground now, and I didn't see that get done, the sidewalks, anything to cross there. So we have still no access across there, and it's been over a year. I just think we need to get, we need to do, get some teeth in those contractors if we're not.
No, I, I agree completely, we, I mean.
By Coyote Willow, crossing there.
Crossing 12th West.
We have sidewalks just dead end into gravel with no signs.
Oh, yeah.
To get across there, and it's definitely a safety, safety hazard for youth and.
No, for sure, and it's, it's one we've, I mean.
I know you've been on it.
Talking with them all along, I mean, we even had the conversation of like, do we need to go after your bond? Normally, that gets contractors to be like, no, we don't want that. So, yeah, no, we need to probably sit down with Stephen and have a, a good conversation on, on how we need to proceed with this contractor.
Yeah, if we pushed hard enough and they're not doing it, I think we go after the bond and get it done.
Yep.
And so it's not on us leaving that out there for the public, can't get their eyes and stuff.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? All right.
Thanks.
You. Okay, item number eight is mayor's report in business, we do have a couple of items there. Number A is, we have a, one of our planning and zoning members, Rob Woodall, has resigned because he's moving to Utah, so it's not very convenient for him to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we have, I've visited with Mr. Vern Muir. He's a gentleman that's been involved in the construction industry and development work a little bit, or quite a bit, actually, over the years, and I had a good conversation with him, and he is willing to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So if there's no discussion or questions about that, I would entertain a motion, yes?
Mayor, I, I'm sorry, but we've got to, we've gotta find a way to get that Planning and Zoning Commission. It, it's way too heavy on developers and realtors. I just think there, we, we've gotta, we gotta extend our reach somehow to get some folks in there that are not, don't have to accuse themselves on every project that comes up, or, so, anyway.
Well, Vern is pretty much retired, and so he's, I mean, his background is that, but he's not gonna be involved in a lot of projects that come up, so that would help.
Well, I'm just saying, you just mentioned that he was developer, so I'm just saying, we gotta somehow.
He's just a contractor.
Well, yeah, he's, I probably stated that wrong, I think he, he worked for contractors and, you know, that kinda thing. He's been involved in the construction industry, I guess would be more accurate.
Okay.
Kind of a thing, but, but I, but I, I hear what you're saying. We have, we've got a, yeah, we've got a pretty good mix on there, but, but we've got one more vacancy that's gonna be coming up. And so I guess I would suggest that if you know anybody that you think would be good on the Planning and Zoning Commission, that.
Where does Mr. Muir live, by the way?
He lives, I asked him where he lives, and it is in the city, but I can't remember exactly where he said. It's, oh, it's over, I think it's over just off of, I think he lives like in a townhome over, over, just kinda over here on the east side of town or something. Yeah, maybe, oh, yeah, yeah, Autumn Arbor, that's right, mhm, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, right there.
Yeah, we need some representation out of the towns.
Yeah, yep.
That's good.
Yep, so, yes.
Can I say something too, since we're talking about this? I know, I spoke to you about this before, I even gave you some suggestions, but I just would really like to see more women on, on that committee. I know I've already said that before, but right now, it's two out of 11. I think we could set an example for the community that women.
I'm, I'm, I have no problem with that, in fact, I've, I've really appreciated the ladies that we do have on there. It's just that I don't hardly get any suggestions for women.
I, I give you one previous, and I could give you more, and I think, I think if you asked us, I, I don't know if you guys could think of some women, but I feel like we need both perspectives, and I would like to see some, you know, everyday people on there too, because I think they would balance out some of the other perspectives.
Everyday, what, how do you define an everyday person?
Well, I'm sorry, but I agree with what Councilmember Erickson said, and.
I mean, somebody that's not a Realtor.
Yeah, that are not in Realtor, they're not a Realtor, and they're not a developer. No, I think we should have those perspectives, but I think we should have some other perspectives.
Yeah. All right, we'll take that on advisement, we need, we can, we can look for some of the female genre who is an everyday person.
Thank you, that'd be awesome.
Good description, huh?
And I would like to see that somehow we have, at least Planning and Zoning, that we kinda sit down, go through it, or we at least know the names. I don't know who Randy is, and Vern, I mean, who Vern is. Until we get here and see on our agenda, I'd like to sit down maybe before, so we're not just ratifying it, so we can at least know who they are. And, cuz that's a very heated area a lot of times, that's where we get, like, most of complaints or most of problems having the planning and zoning. It's the public, and we need to have a little more say in that, and it's just, just ratified and so.
Well, and that's probably not a bad idea, I'm not sure exactly how to go about that without having set up a, you know, an interview with, with, with y'all to visit with them. But one thing that I do, when I, when I, as I call a few references, and I talk to a few people that know them, and, and one of the things I ask them is, do you feel like they will have, they will be fair-minded? You know, will they, are they gonna be really heavy opinionated on one side or the other? Or are they gonna listen to, you know, the arguments on both sides and be fair-minded? And that, that's kinda the biggest thing that I look for, you know, when I'm, when I'm talking to people and talking to the references that, that, that I call about them. And so that, I think, helps a little bit, but maybe what we could do is find out, you know, more about them and put that out to you on email or something like that.
Email or do executive session, I don't know if, we'd have to ask legal on that, but just so we discuss that.
I, I don't think you'd have to have an executive session, I think we could just put that information out on an email to you, so that you know who they are and know a little bit more about them.
That's why I'd like to see, just so we, you know, cuz we don't usually get to ratification on it, and it's like, that's almost too late. Cuz I had asked several people who was Vern, to even find out who he was, and I found out he's a contractor. So it's just to educate myself, to know who this person is coming on.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea, I think we can do that. So, anyway, is there, at this point in time then, I would, unless there's any objections, I would, but, I mean, hearing that, I will, I think we can take that into account, and in the future, we'll try to get you a little bit more information about folks before we, before we move for ratification. But at this point, is there, is there an appetite to move forward with this?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we ratify Vern Muir as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Council President Walker. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go ahead with that, with that appointment, and, yes?
While we're on that Planning and Zoning Commission, I spoke with the mayor prior to our meeting start this evening. I'm the liaison to planning and zoning, but they meet on Thursday nights, and Thursday nights, I have a conflict. So I have not been attending their meetings. Initially, I didn't think that was too big of a problem, because I know the attorney said maybe council members shouldn't be attending their meetings. But maybe they could, so the mayor's going to investigate with the attorney whether we should have a liaison there at the meetings, and if so, it may warrant a change in my assignment to one of you, so just a heads up.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, I'll, I'll, I'll visit with ICRIMP and, you know, and see what their thoughts are, you know, what they see in other cities and things like that, since they're the ones that would have to defend us in any kind of a situation like that. So we'll, we'll check with them and find out, and then we'll, then we'll, you know, make adjustments if we need to, so. Okay, thank you, appreciate that. All right, item B is a proclamation 2024-06, which is Small Business Saturday, that's coming up. We'll go ahead and read this proclamation, it's up there on the screen for you to follow along. "Small Business Saturday, November 30th, 2024, whereas the government of Rexburg, Idaho celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 61.1% of net new jobs created since 1995. And small businesses employ 45.9% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the United States stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas, 59% of U.S. consumers are aware of Small Business Saturday, shopped or ate at a small independently-owned retailer or restaurant on Small Business Saturday 2023. And whereas, Rexburg, Idaho supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Jerry Merrill, Mayor of Rexburg, here do, hereby, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2024 as Small Business Saturday, and urge residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday, and to shop small throughout the year." All right, we will sign that and make it official. To make it official, we actually are supposed to ratify this as well, so is there a motion to ratify this proclamation?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Any further discussion or questions about Small Business Saturday? Hearing none, I would entertain, I, or, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
The lighting, the Christmas tree lighting, it's that same Saturday, right?
Yes, that will be on the 30th, uh-huh.
And is it at 5?
It's at, generally at 5:30, and at Smith, it'll be at Porter Park this year.
Oh, okay.
Okay, cuz we have Rick Robinson and his family, and some helpers have been putting up the lights over there in Porter Park to do the light show over there this year, so that'll be pretty exciting. Okay. All right, one other thing I would just mention real quick is I was, attended a, Idaho Falls, Mayor Casper hosted a local legislators forum on Monday, and we had quite a few of our local legislators come, and we talked about a lot of things that, that concern cities when the legislature gets together, urban renewal, it seems like they're always coming up with a way to tinker with urban renewal and different things. And so we talked about a lot of things that are important to us as cities, and how we'd like to be able to work together with our legislators and have more communication and all those kinda things on the different things that concern cities. And so it was a really good meeting. Previous to that, right here in this room, we had a Urban Renewal 101 meeting, and we had a lot of those same legislators. Our local ones came, and we talked at length about urban renewal and helped them to understand it better and why it's important to us. And some of the legislators down there at that, at the meeting in Idaho Falls were really complimentary to us about how they understand urban renewal better now, and they're, they're more armed and ready to go to battle for us in the legislature this year. this year. So I think that was really good. So appreciate Matt and Scott Miller and Scott Johnson and all those who worked hard to put that presentation together. All right, let's move on to item number nine. Items for consideration, this is a planning and zoning recommendation to approve the Adara at Teton Lakes Platte located at approximately 1175 North, 12th West. The Platte has approximately 62.39 acres and will contain 157 lots. Alan, go ahead and tell us a little bit about this.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. One clarification on it's 167 lots, not 157.
Okay, 167.
Clerical error on that one.
All right.
This project has been presented to the staff to review. We've gone through multiple questions, processes to make sure that the city can actively serve this with sewer, with water. And a plan has been put together that does meet the requirements of the city and that the developer has agreed to work with us on that. So they have met those requirements. We presented it to Planning and Zoning and they have recommended it to you for approval. So I would entertain any questions you have at this point.
All right. Questions, anyone?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I see there, there was a traffic study done?
Yes.
There, there's a lot of development out in that area, out in the Hibbert area, and it's all funneling into one intersection on 12th West. Is that going to be, I mean, that's something we're going to have to address, right?
Yes.
Soon, I'm sure. Because that's a, that intersection is lousy with, especially when the, you know, the traffic coming from the school and, and so, I mean, I know, I don't think that'll affect this particular thing, but it's something we've got to look at. I saw the traffic study indicated that 2030 something, I don't know, was, it was going to, it was going to overpower that intersection.
One of the things you look at, and this, this is a question that Keith could handle very easily, but a lot of this, this is where we come in and in our code, it requires the connectivity. So instead of dumping everything to 12th West, we want connectivity to the west, to the north, to the south, everywhere we possibly can, because future developments may connect this down to 3000 West, which would then give them another access to come back to 33, which would help pull some of that pressure off of 12th. So we, we plan that in whenever we look at these to make sure that interconnectivity. And the idea behind it is not just getting to the main roads, but making it so people in one subdivision don't have to go out on 12th or on those other main roads. They can travel between subdivisions if they're just going to city. So traffic impact study does tell us where we're at, what's going on. But then our future planning for our transportation plan also addresses a lot of the issues you're talking about.
Could you go back to the Platte?
Yes. This is in two parts. So this is the east half of it. This is the west portion, portion of it.
So I'm trying to get oriented here. Where are those streets connecting?
Here's the connectivity to Copper Heights going west. There is two, there's one planned in here on this section. There's connectivity to Ferris Lane, which takes you into Sunrise Meadows. And then let's go back here. I believe there is also connectivity here. Is that one there?
No.
No, it's over here. So there's two of them going to the south. Three? Okay. So we have three different ones. It's hard to look at it when it's that way. So we are addressing those issues. Yeah, the third one, that's where I was forgetting, is right here. So that one brings it in connecting to stuff outside of Copper Heights but west of this subdivision.
So does this subdivision then kind of wrap behind and by, behind, I think I mean to the west of Ferris Lane?
This parcel you're seeing?
Okay, yeah.
This includes all of this Platte, including this little parcel.
Okay. So that's the access to Ferris Lane is the one that's heading east?
Yep. It'll connect here. This is the one that connects to Copper Heights. There will be one coming here. There's another in here somewhere and another further up in here.
Those will be future connections, yeah.
Yeah, they'll build the road to that spot, the one the next subdivision builds, then they can connect right to it.
Yeah. Okay.
What kind of compact does that have on the water? As far as like water pressure, are we getting near the point that we are going to need to look at another well in the area? Or are we doing okay?
I think we're okay, aren't we Keith?
Yeah, we're doing okay. I mean, some of the things that we look at master plan wise is looping around to like Moody north of there, doing a loop over to Walmart and start, you just start looping those and then that way you've got flow from other directions. But there's going to, sometimes we're going to need additional wells and reservoirs definitely as we grow.
Out there.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Yeah.
I agree with Councilman E. Erickson on, yeah, we're going exits on this subdivision going out, but it all goes right back down to 12th West, right back down to 33 and 12th West, which we already know that is a problem on the intersection. One, because it wasn't designed exactly right. And that's one thing we're going to have to look at because it's, it's going to continue now, it's going to back up northbound. I mean, it's going to take a few years before this gets fully in, but we got to look at that 12th West.
No, I, I agree with you. I think that needs to be part of our, our P.O. discussions, you know, and if you, you know, coming up to be able to look at that and try to figure out how we can make that intersection better. I don't know, maybe we need a big double roundabout or something like, right there. But, but we are going to have to do something there because it, in the mornings, it gets pretty backed up there. So we're going to have to figure out something there.
How to work with I.T.D. and.
But then.
Yeah, it's I.T.D.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be, it'd be both. Yeah, it'd be both.
Things we could do, isn't there?
Well, one of the good things is, you know, I mean, I live right across the street there. So we do have options, which is good. It's always nice to have options because if I know, you know, if I've gone down there, if I know about what time I'm going to hit that intersection and I'm coming into town, I go out north and go around the other way because, you know, it gets pretty backed up. So, but it, so it's nice to have options. But having said that, I still think we need to be looking at what we can do to that intersection to make it flow better.
Well, and I think one of the critical things to look at, our discussion earlier about the overpass on Moody, if Moody goes in.
Exactly. That would help a lot.
Gives them a lot better option, especially if they're just crossing town to get to Walmart or the temple.
Yeah, yeah, that would take a lot of pressure off right there because it's a quicker way to get into town rather than having to go clear up to 4000.
That connecting communities is a critical part of future development.
Yeah, it is. Yes.
Well, and I know we've already talked about this, but even having right-hand turn lanes would help so much. Because there's no, there's no.
Yeah, sometimes though, although I, I do, I have noticed that when, like if you're coming, you know, the one direction, if you had a right-hand turn lane, it could even be more of a problem because the cars keep turning right and then the ones that are trying to turn left can't make their left turn because the car, because it's free flowing right. So without, and Colin, you know, we've talked about this 100 times, you know, right there by Valleywide, that needs to be widened so that there is a, a right turn lane to turn into. Because right now, it's a problem. If you've got a lot of cars turning right into that one lane, even though your light is green to turn left, you have to sit there and wait and you get sometimes one car through per lane and it, and it's a problem. So, so there, there's a lot of moving parts there that we're going to have to take a look at and try to get that figured out.
It really needs to be designed just like 12, University and 12th West.
Yeah, it does.
To go through. And the problem is they put all the computers, they put all the light system right next to it.
In the spot, yeah.
They've got to do all that now. So it's, it's not a small fix. It's a very expensive fix.
Yeah. But anyway, we'll, that'll have to be one of the things on our, our P.O. agenda for, for a long time to come. So anyway, okay, is there any other questions or comments before we move forward?
Can I just say one more thing? I just thought it was really neat that there's green space in there. Because I, I just, I thought, I think it's really beautifully designed with, you know, paths and grass and things like that. So.
Yeah, it looks nice, doesn't it? Yeah.
Well, and I think one thing to take note of too, is working with Keith, the developer, this is an area where they're looking at being able to provide some of those amenities, but also a reduced amount of water being used in the subdivision. So they're spending some extra money to go out and have this designed professionally so that they can reduce the amount and the impact upon the city at that point. So developer's gone above and beyond to make sure it works.
You have a comment?
Ask, yeah, Aaron's the developer. So if you want to answer some questions.
I appreciate you brought that up. Just, we've, we've worked really hard to, to focus on, the whole community is, is age targeted. So we're not going to age restrict it. We're not going to put the, the 65 and up in the D restrictions, but the product is on by JRW, the housing product is all aging in place housing. But then the whole community, you know, we have the two acre hike and bike trail through the middle. Do you have the, do you have the color ones on page?
I don't know where we.
Okay, sorry.
Do you see the path right here?
Yeah, there's a, there's a two acre hike and bike trail through the middle of lots. There's a, that's a 1.7 acre interior community, open space, Pachibol, Gulf, Gophersby. And then there's a two acre park at the entrance. Really what we're trying to do is to try, we've hired a respected marketing firm in Dallas. We're trying to attract second home home buyers that will build up our tax base and not burden the school district. That's really what we're trying to do. So, and it's also for those that are trying to downsize and live in a maintenance free community. So HOA is going to take care of everything, all the mowings, no removal.
I may have to move.
We're trying to be in between the homestead and your 6,000 square foot house. But really what we're trying to do is build up the, the community's tax base with second home owners that would be in St. George, come up here in the summer, or those 65 and up that, that are looking to downsize because of surgeries or aging out and they want a single family product. They don't want to live in a townhouse. So that, that's the focus.
That's a good concept. So Aaron, are, is, what's that through the middle?
It's a, it's a hike and bike trail that will be maintained by the HOA.
So that's not an alleyway?
It's going to be a very expensive landscaped area with, with a, yeah, with a paved trail and landscape and irrigation.
You see the landscape of Gia Santa. It's, it's very inclusive of all of the things.
Yeah, we hired the architect that designs landscape for the temples. It's pretty.
I did like the step down one on the west side where you kept little bigger lots next to Robinson and stuff. That, because that was a complaint out there when we rezoned this, was the step down.
Yeah.
We did look at the west, which I liked.
Tried really hard. We put all our biggest lots up against Sunrise or Sunset. Sorry, what's the name of the?
Robinson, Robinson.
Sunrise Meadows. Yeah, we put all our biggest lots next to them and then clustered the little smaller lots around common areas so that by the naked eye, you can't even tell it's the smaller lot because it backs up to two acre.
Yeah, that's smart.
I like that idea that, because it definitely was a problem there when we rezoned it, that that's what he was complaining about, that he did look at. So.
It shows you the landscaping.
Actually, we do have a.
Do you have a more updated one?
No, that's, that's correct. Okay.
So, so I'm assuming this will be phased?
Yeah, we'll have to phase it. A first phase though, we will have to connect to Ferris Lane. So the first phase will have the.
Aren't you doing all of this to here?
Uh-huh.
That's the.
Okay, so, so the 12, the, you'll, you'll start it on 12th West and then work your way west?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So we'll have a second point of egress on Ferris and then step to the south. You'll, you'll see there's a gray square on the bottom. We have to build a lift station. It's going to basically be original lift station, working with Keith's team on. So it's going to open up a whole new sewer basin for the city.
Looks great.
All right. Any further questions or discussion?
And is that all LDR 1? Is it all zone LDR 1? I meant to look that up.
Yeah. I think that's what we changed it to, yeah. Yeah. Okay. Well, if there's no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to move forward on this planning and zoning recommendation to approve this.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the Platte for Adara at Teton Lakes as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Reece. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion passes. Looks like we're going to have a new development. All right, congratulations. All right, item number 10 is a second reading of ordinance number 1324 to rezone 119 West, second north from Light Industrial to Low and Low Density Residential 3. This is our second reading. Is there any questions or comments about this before we can, before we move forward on the second reading? If none, I would entertain a motion to second read ordinance 1324.
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Council President Walker. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is second read. Third reading is ordinance number 1322, the annexation of approximately 360 stationary road into the city of Rexburg. I would entertain a motion to consider this item third read.
I'll make a motion that we consider ordinance 1322 third read.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Eric Erickson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I would consider ordinance 1322 third read. Item number two is ordinance number 1323 to rezone approximately 222 West, second north from Low Density Residential 2 to Low Density Residential 3. Do I hear a motion to move forward on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 1323 and consider it third read.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Chambers. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll consider ordinance 1323 is third read. All right, our consent calendar tonight consists of minutes from the November 6th, 2024 meeting and the approval of the payment of the city of Rexburg bills. Is there any questions or comments about either of these items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda and payer bills.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Council President Walker. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. We will go ahead and enter the minutes and pay the bills. All right, we have a, on item number 12 is a, is a executive session. I need a motion at this time to move into executive session as per Idaho State Statute 74-2061A and B to consider personnel matters. Is there such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I saw move that we move into executive session per Idaho State Statute 74-2061A and B.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Colin Erickson. We need a roll call vote. Mary, would you do that for us, please?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Colin Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reece?
Yes.
Council President Walker?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We will move into executive session and we've been.